Patient is filed, um, so I would say just the, you know, potential for that is not enough to rise to the level of conflict. I would say if a lease had been signed during the, the course of the deliberations on the proposed ordinance, then that it, that in my opinion would result in an actual conflict, but not just the potential to sign a lease. If that answers your question.
I mean, we all land here.
Right, of course.
We'd all be technically, anybody, anybody could sign a lease after.
Yep.
Yeah. Those amendments that they've spoken about.
And the, and the proposed, um, amendments to the bylaws also talks about what happens if, for example, everybody on the commission has a conflict, so if everybody here had signed a lease or everyone here had, you know, had an interest, um, in, in a particular matter before the planning commission, then the, the language that we added here is that all the members participate in, in decision making on the matter. Because we need a quorum to act any, you know, conduct business, so.
So doesn't the project allow, um, tax reductions for everybody that owns property? So would that not be a conflict of interest for everybody that owns property?
I would disagree with that, um, and again, it's hard for me to talk about something in the abstract when there's no formal application here in front of us. Um, but I, I would not say that it directly, it provides a pecuniary interest because it's so abstract in the sense that, you know, it's a benefit allegedly to everybody rather than a direct personal problem interest to a landowner that is signing a lease and obtaining, you know, money for use of the property. So I don't think that that results in a conflict of interest, at least under the language that we've drafted.
And you said that there would be a vote by the members, um, I guess on whether it was a gray or whether or not it was a con- conflict as defined.
Yep, if, if it's a gray area typically, I mean, in some instances, it may, it may just fall within the, you know, black letter of the way that this is drafted. If it's no question that it's a conflict of interest, say it's your own, you know, you submitted an application for special use permit, obviously you're, you know, you have a conflict of interest in that. So, um, if it's a, you know, an obvious conflict under the, you know, the terms of the bylaws, then in that instance, the, it would be most appropriate for the commissioners to recuse themselves without a hold of the commission. But if it's a situation where there, like I said, maybe a gray area, um, then, then that's when typically we have the planning commission vote to determine whether or not a conflict exists or not.
So have you worked with, um, communities who have been successful in implementing wind, wind?
Ordinance, absolutely, yep, yep.
And, um, I guess I would like to make a motion that based on, um, what's happening in our surrounding community and what the MTA is saying and the conflicting or the, the, the extremes, that we would table this until our next meeting, because I would like to, um, strengthen my own, my understanding and knowledge of, of how this works.
Sure.
Not with any, um, specific concern other than, um, what I've learned through this process and what this looks like seems to be pretty extreme opposite of, of, of things that I have understood and read and, and been counseled on. So I would like to make a motion to table this until our next meeting.
You, you meaning table voting?
Table this bylaws draft recommendation.
But not finished conversation we have anymore to continue.
No.
Okay. I still got some questions.
I, I want to keep the discussion going.
Uh, Robert's rules, I believe, is that you make a vote and then you have discussion?
Yep, so a motion and then someone needs to second it and then you can discuss.
I would second it. Discuss? Any further discussion?
Well, I guess just in total on the bylaws and right, I mean, there's the whole thing, I guess. There was a few comments I wanted to add as well. As a new commissioner, looking at the bylaws, I, you know, you look at those to try to give you some guidance and I felt ours were missing some important things after you go back and you look at the Planning Enabling Act or just some important things that are in there. I guess can you, um, could we define the ex officio, um, member? Cause my understanding is that would be David.
Yep, the ex officio member is the member of the legislative body, the township board member, but they are a voting member or they just are in the commission, but they're even ex officio member because their terms are different than, you know, regular planning commission members because their term coincides with their term on the township board, so. Um, but yes, we can.
Yeah, I guess I, and I have a draft that I've gone through.
Oh, right.
Modified myself, um, so I can give it to you later, but, um, so yeah, I would like to see something added. Um, and then the commission members shall be qualified electors of Cato Township.
Can, can we back up a little bit? What article section are you talking about?
Um, Article three, membership, section one. Um, that first sentence is okay, um, other than I add Cato Commission. Um, and then I would add that one member of the township board shall be appointed as a member of the commission as an ex officio member. Uh, commission members shall be qualified electors of Cato Township except as provided in section fifteen of Public Act thirty-three. So I believe you can have one.
Non- registered, non-qualified elector.
Yeah, yeah, there was a little haziness on how somebody had become on our board, uh, or on this commission a couple of years ago, so I guess I want to make that clear on who can, can be on there. Um, section two, um.
Okay, stop there, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Can you explain that one more time again? I, I'm not so sure it caught the whole point there.
What's, what's the point? What's your question?
Are you, are you questioning, for example, in this Cato Township, are you questioning David's responsibility then? Or?
No, I want clarity, I want, I just explained as a new commissioner, you know, I need to look at something and kind of understand how this all works. I think you'll see some of my other comments as I go on. We want some clarity and these are linked back to the Enabling Act, zoning or planning, um, Enabling Act. And I think there's important things in there and when you look at other, uh, entities or local government bylaws, um, they have these things in here and ours is kind of bare bones. And if we're gonna be amending that, we might as well fix it.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you. When I looked at, took a first look at your bylaws, there were several things that conflict of interest being one of them, which is required to be in the bylaws that I thought you, we might wanna, um, you know, make amendments to, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Randy.
Um, section two talks about the terms of office as well as composition of the commission and removal of others shall be in accordance with Public Act blah, blah, blah. Um, I'd like it to say commission members shall be appointed to three-year terms except for ex officio members whose term shall expire with his or her term on the township board. Again, as a new per- I didn't even know how long I was.
Yeah, and a lot of that is just language that's directly coming from the Planning Enabling Act anyway, so, yep.
Um, and then on your conflict of interest, um, looks somewhat similar to some of the other ones that I viewed. The only sentence that I noted in that opening paragraph was the members disqualified from voting on the matter if so provided by these bylaws or by majority vote of the remaining members of the commission. So I guess I, I didn't see that in the sample, but I guess I would want to make that clear that there would be a vote. Um, couple of things for the chairperson's responsibility, this is under Article four, officers and their duties. Uh, section three, we just had like two sentences. The chairperson shall be one of the citizen members of the commission. The chairperson shall have the privilege of discussing all matters before the commission and vote. Um, it also talks about in these acts about submitting an annual report each year to the township, um, concerning the commission's operations, membership composition, the status of planning activities and recommendations to the township board related to planning and development issues. Is that something that we, well, I guess a question, do we currently do that? And, you know, as chairperson, you'd like to see this stuff spelled out, I'm sure, I would. Um, and then also, this is really important because we have some issues with this. The chairperson shall be responsible for overseeing the commission's review of the master plan at least every five years after adoption to determine whether to commence the procedure to amend the master plan or adopt a new master plan. The reviews and its findings shall be recorded in the minutes of the relevant meetings of the commission. I don't know where our master plan has been for a long time because I begged and pleaded to get a copy and we had some people pass away, um, but, I mean, this, this would have spelled it out if people get on the commission, it's like, whoa, I gotta do this stuff.
And I can say that, um, during that time when our chair, the figures chairperson was alive, um, there was a request for review, um, I think the guy's name was David B. And he made a recommendation that it's, that nothing be made, um, nothing be considered or looked at until after the twenty-twenty census was complete. So I can speak to that, I don't know prior to that where it all fell, but that is the most recent recommendation that was received.
And the, the one we had is two thousand ten, so we're behind, but we know we have to do it. But again, if this stuff would have been laid out, somebody would have been thinking about it when they see that, you know, their responsibilities. And I, I guess do we give an annual report to the board, Phil, um, each year? Or is it very informal, I guess?
I, I have not. I have not been in this role that long, just understand, so.
Again, clarity.
Yeah, I would like to, David, you, Kim, you guys.
As far as I am aware, in. I am not aware of anything being submitted to the board other than, um, meeting minutes and anything that the liaison takes back to the board. So on a regular basis, but I don't know that it's been summarized or compiled at the end of the year.
All right, well, according to these acts, it looks like it's supposed to be. Um, and then the last thing I would put in here, just, um, Article, what's that, six, meetings, section one, um, and Kim mentioned this earlier, there can be no less than four regular meetings, um, held each year. So we know, again, let's say we all got hit by a bus, somebody could pick this up and know what they're, you know, doing, you know, heaven forbid. But that's, that's, um, uh, some of the comments I had and I can give this to you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Before you give it to her, Randy, um, Article five, section one, same wording, first meeting in January, just move in January.
Yep, yep. And that, uh, you know, I don't know if we say something about the even numbered months or just kind of leave that up to every year we can decide, but.
Yeah, I, I usually advise being as vague as possible in the, in the bylaws when it comes to scheduling of, you know, the meetings on a annual basis, because then it gives you more flexibility each year to determine, okay, we might want more this year, we might want to do odd number of months, you know, in a given year. It just depends on the makeup of the planning commission and your schedules. I've seen bylaws where they, um, say, okay, our meetings are going to be at five P M. On the first Monday of the month and I'm like, hmm, you may not always be able to do that. So, you know, let's be vague a little bit about the meeting schedule, you know, so you guys can set that as you see fit.
You have a discussion? Do we have a motion and a second discussion, uh? Hold on, a favor.
Can you repeat the motion here?
Um, the motion is, is that we table this, uh, bylaws, the bylaws.
My, my only question is what do we do with the, the matter at hand as far as the wind ordinance? I mean, that's, people have, have raised concerns about this with potential conflicts on this, this commission. Are we gonna can, just continue on with the going through discussion deliberation? I guess, do you have a recommendation?
Right, I mean, if, if there's a concern regarding a conflict of interest, I would say at a minimum at this point, even though there's no conflict provisions in the bylaws that be disclosed, um, you know, and then, uh, we, we can go from there to determine whether or not a conflict exists, but, um, you know, I, the, the law requires that there be conflict of interest provisions in the bylaws no matter what, no matter how they're, you know, structured or defined, but, um, I would, I would certainly recommend we do that sooner rather than later, if not today, at the next meeting, we, we address it. And it may not be worded in the same way as, you know, how I've worded it, but, um, you know, at a minimum disclosure and then if, if the commission takes the position that it's not a conflict of interest, then, then we continue moving forward, but you, um, you know, at least it's been, uh, voted on and, you know, memorialized in the minutes of the meeting.
So tabling it though, I mean, are we good to just still go talking about the wind ordinance? When there's a potential out there, are we taking a little risk there?
I think there's a little bit of a risk there certainly, if, if it's not disclosed and determined to be, whether or not it's determined to be a conflict, I always, like I said, I advise making that decision sooner rather than later so that there's no question regarding whether the conflict was a problem, you know, to, you know.
So it's a little bit cart before the horse here. We gotta kind of operate in accordance with the rules right before we go down a path.
Right, exactly.
I have a question for you. Let's say in our ordinance, we say we change the height to three hundred feet and we just wrote this in here, are we supposed to go through roll call and say, do we all agree to that? Before then we, then we say that, no, we all agree with this, then I can take it to the board?
So typically how we, you can do it, um, piecemeal like that, where it's like going through each specific paragraph? You can do that, um, or you can get it, you know, work on it, um, have kind of a working draft and then get it to a position where you, you're like, okay, we're all comfortable with this and then make the motion on the, the ordinance as a whole. I would recommend you do that either way, um, because it's gonna be, you know, we're gonna have a full public hearing on the ordinance anyway once we get it.
I think that's exactly how we've been doing it line by line, having, I mean, every little change that we've been penciling in or crossing out, we're not voting on every, we're, we're having a discussion, I think that's what the form of.
Cause ultimately what we'll do is once we get it into, once we get this ordinance into a comfortable, uh, a version that's comfortable, we'll have the public hearing and then after the public hearing, if you want to make any additional changes to the ordinance, um, you know, based on the comments that you've received or, you know, additional, you know, research on your end or guidance from us, um, then we can make those changes and then what we'll do is, and then we'll load on the ordinance as a whole to recommend to the township board, um.
My question is, and whatever we've changed, as long as the conflict of interest has been addressed before we agree this is the one for me to take, is there a conflict of interest until that is brought up?
Again, my recom- my, um, opinion of that is that it involves any deliberations associated with the, with the matter at hand, which would include deliberations on this ordinance now. Um, again, that's our opinion on it, not every attorney agrees with that. That's, like I said, is the most conservative way of viewing it because even discussion, discussion or deliberation on an ordinance now can be, you know, another planning commission member's, you know, another planning commission member's, you know, a decision on that one, and then adopted or recommended for approval and voted on later on the line. Um, that's, that's the position that we take, is that from the very beginning, we always, um, say, okay, if there's a conflict of interest, then, um, disclose it at the outset of, you know, the deliberation on an issue.
The only question, what would happen if I go through this and I write before and then I would sign? Then what would happen with?
I, I'm not understanding your question.
If, if, if I, you know, if I was going through like we have and right before we were ready to hand it to it, I signed or Randy signed, somebody signed a, a lease.
Again, like I said, I think that the actual, I think the conflict of interest is triggered when the lease is signed, in my opinion.
So then we'd have to start out and go all the way back because.
No, not, not necessarily. Not necessarily.
I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thinking of two different ways, I know what, uh, you want to try to attempt as far as not voting on changing of bylaws until we have an actual agreed upon one at the next meeting. Tablely actual, but we can still address openly now any conflict and then discuss it as a group to see if we want to continue on.
Correct, that's the way I understand it.
So.
I think we need to repeat the motion because that was not what I understood.
So I understand that the, the motion was postponing just adoption of any changes to the bylaws as it relates to conflict of interest, is that correct?
And to do a little more research into, so.
What is considered conflict of interest, because like what I'm seeing is.
Do you have the attorney?
Is conflict of interest in this draft looks very different from other conflict of interests that I've seen um, and other legal direction. So I, I realize that every firm probably has their own.
I wasn't at this table, I have their own opinions as well, which, again, I know this is a lot being directed toward you. I wasn't at the last meeting, I did watch it and people tried to make it too black and white. We're not, they were trying to say you need to step down, blah, 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 that's recusing yourself is a whole different thing. You simply get to sit in the chair and if we determine that there is a conflict of interest, I don't feel that anything that we've done to this point on any of our parts has been swayed one side of the topic. We've had very open discussions, we've had, not, not one person at these tables has said, nope, it's gonna be this way or nothing. We've all, so even if there was a conflict or there's a continuing conflict, I don't think we should go back and scrap everything we've done to this point. But along with what she's saying legally, we should at least address any open disclosures of a conflict even without a, an amendment to our bylaws.
Before we proceed with.
Before we can proceed with anything concerning the wind today.
I would agree with that.
So what you're looking for from me today is for, for me to tell the group that this is no big secret, that, uh, my husband has a corporation, I am not a shareholder of the corporation, I have not signed any leases, I have not seen any leases. Um, I don't even know to the capacity of what it looks like, I am not part of that, that business um, other than the six weeks that I sell sweet corn for my husband. Um, that's it, that's my involvement. I, I am not a decision maker, I am not an advisor, I am not involved in discussion around decisions. Um, so for whatever anybody's understanding is, I've been told that people are not gonna believe that. Kim, people are not gonna believe that, you can believe what you want, that is the fact. I'm fully opening my personal life here to tell you, that's, that's the facts. So I've been a member of the commission for around twelve years. I don't know exactly what my, um, implementation date is and, and nobody can seem to find that, but I've been around for a long time. I did not join the commission with a personal agenda. I did not join, um, at a, at a time of conflict where I felt like I needed to weigh in and, and have my own personal, I have never considered any decision that we've made from a personal perspective. I have been open and objective, I am not out in the community soliciting or persuading people. I am not visiting neighbors and, um, um, trying to persuade people's opinion on wind. I am doing my homework when people come to the, you, when you all come and you make your convers- or your, your, um, public comment, I do research that, I am the, the, the recording secretary and I do make a mark to follow up. And I have never come back and, um, created, um, dispute or even though information that I have received is conflicting to, to a lot of information shared, I have never come back to the group and said, no, you know, this is really the way it is. So I have been, I feel like, like I, I worked in a large corporation for thirty-eight years and I fully understand what conflict of interest is. I, um, served in administration as a leadership role for thirty-one of the thirty-eight years and as a director and trust me, I understand what conflict of interest is and I'm doing my work as a commissioner, um, and I, I do not have any legislative authority in this decision-making process, I've researched just like everybody else. I know some people think that they've done all the work, but I've been objective, both sides, looked at both sides. I'm not coming and presenting loads of one-sided information. So that is my full disclosure, one hundred and ten percent, probably way more than you needed or wanted to know, but that's where I sit. And, um, there has never been any question to my integrity, to the, to the commission, to the community, to my thirty-eight years of high performance in my employment. And that's what I can tell you about me and my full disclosure. Are you looking for anything further?
No, I think that, I think that was good.
And just to be clear, I'm not, I, I, I don't have any stake in the game, so I don't, I don't want you to do it. I'm like, oh, you have a conflict.
No, I know, I know.
Just being devil's advocate.
But I know that you have been contacted and I, and been schooled on.
Right.
What the potentially and how accurate that information has been, I don't know.
Sure.
Because there is a lot of misinformation out there.
I think that cleared the air completely, Kim, I mean.
What is your husband's conflict in this?
My husband is not part of this commission and, and he does not have a say in what I decide.
Well, I know that. You're the one that brought your husband up.
That's full disclosure, sir.
Public comments are, are a whole entire place.
I, I appreciate your comments, Kim, and you don't need to defend yourself.
Well, I kind of feel like I do because I sit amongst a group that is, um, very, um, judgmental and dishonest and when I hear that my neighbors are being approached by members of the commission in a very negative way about me or and/or my family, that, that is, makes you a little bit defensive, Randy.
I hope that you're not saying that we're dishonest, because that would be a little bit low blow there.
Well, how about it?
You don't need to get snippy, we're all professional, you worked in corporate for thirty-eight years, you should be able to handle this stuff, okay? So, um, I'm not, I'm not gonna fight with you and I'm not making it personal, I can just, you've done a great job from what I've heard on the commission, nobody's asking you to step down, but we need to address, is, is this or is this not a conflict? That's a professional thing to look at, okay?
I think it's better addressed, I think it's better addressed. Who has a discussion?
I think as a, as a commissioner, you need to decide amongst us, you exclude it, whether or not we're gonna think that that, that disclosure is enough to say you need to recuse yourself for the discussion. And from what you said and what I've seen so far, I know I'm a new member, um, and I understand everybody, everybody at this table has personal opinions one way or another. Um, it's not our job to bring that here, it's, it's our job to take the facts, pass a safe ordinance, whether people want to call it restrictive or exclusion, I don't care about those words. We have three things to do here, health, welfare and safety of our members. And I don't think you've done anything to jeopardize that up to this point.
So, do I take that as a motion?
I think this is still part of the discussion, I was, I was giving my, my take. I have one discussion that all the neighbors have given their husband and their farm my whole life. We do work for them and I agree with her that whatever work we've done, I don't, Kim, I don't go to Kim, I go to the corporation for, they come to me or I go to them for what we have to do. There is no, for my feeling, there is no, she does not have the, the, uh, I guess, part of the corporation part, other than the sweet corn part is the only thing that I say that, uh, no, Kim's been in, I'm, been on here to second August, the planning commission, Kim, and she's right, I mean, she's been here, done a great job. And I definitely agree that she should not step down, like the audience is trying to get her.
Step down or recuse, I guess, we've got to be careful how we say that.
You have a discussion?
I, you know, I totally understand if you say you're not involved, but, you know, compensation comes out of corporations to individuals. Okay, so, um, I can't, I can't like separate those two, knowing what I know about taxes and, and how that works. Um, for me, uh, I, I do think that that is a direct financial conflict, um, so that's where I stand.
Just a quick question, didn't we vote on the postponement, I mean, the decision? We didn't vote on that?
No, we kind of got off track.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're clear.
We all led down to the disclosure, I thought we were gonna handle the disclosure first and then.
Okay, so, so that, I guess that motion is.
Still there.
Still there, yeah, we probably want to resolve the motion before we go to another motion, if that makes sense. Um, and I, and I don't think that, I don't think that voting on the motion with respect to amending the bylaws now before deciding on the, the conflict of interest issue is a problem. But I would say we probably want to resolve that motion before we, we vote on the motion. I would say doing it before we decide, start discussion on the wind ordinance is probably appropriate, but if you guys want to vote on the motion on the table, which is tabling, um, um, implementing amendments to the bylaws, then I think that's fine. And then if you guys want to go into the separate motion of whether or not there's a conflict of interest, then we can do that separately, if that makes sense, if that makes sense.
I mean, I think we all kind of led together.
Sure, yep.
Any other discussion? I guess I need to clarify that, any other discussion on amendment of the bylaws?
Now would we call it tabling or just at our next meeting, we'll have a finalized draft to vote upon?
That's a, that's a great point, yeah.
Well, I think.
Cause it's not like we're tabling it, we just want to come with the final.
I'm tabling a decision.
There we go, okay, until we have a final draft.
Yeah, Robert's rules technically says when you table, it's a temporary, it, it, it's tabling without date, but typically we like to say postponing to, a decision to the following planning commission meeting. That's just, you know, kind of semantics, but, um, you know, tabling a decision on it to the next meeting would be appropriate. That's, that's a good way of describing it, if that's the intention of the motion.
Get your motion, yes?
I would second that motion.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other further discussion? We've discussed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye and oppose? Motion carried. So do I have another motion? On well, who wants to make the motion? On, um, full disclosure?
So I, I guess the motion was in the air, either in for that there is no conflict of interest based on the disclosure or a motion that there is a conflict of interest based on the disclosure. Those would be, those would be the probably two competing motions.
I would make a motion if there is conflict of interest based on the disclosure. The judge, they're gonna, they're gonna tell the judge, I, I'm not part of that, you know, I just don't see that flying. And that exposes the township to legal.
So we have a motion that there is a conflict of.
There's a conflict of interest based on what was disclosed.
About a second. Discussion. Any further discussion?
So the, I'm still trying to clarify.
This motion.
No, yeah, I know the motion. I'm just trying to, the motion is the made, uh, there is a conflict of interest. And then we gotta vote on after it when we see. So my still question is, is from what she heard, that Kim said, does she feel?
She doesn't agree. I want to speak for me, but.
When you say she.
No, Kim, this, this, Leslie feel that there is a conflict of interest from what Kim presented?
So that's the, that's the, the problem is that because your bylaws don't define it yet. Currently, your bylaws don't define it. So, when the bylaws don't define it, then there's no trigger for, so the, so the way the Planning Enabling Act is worded, either it's a black letter law conflict with the bylaws or planning commission has to vote to decide whether it's a conflict or not. Because you don't currently have anything in your bylaws that says it's a conflict, then it's up to the commission to determine whether it's a conflict or not. Um, unless and until, you know, conflict of interest provisions are adopted in the bylaws, so.
And that's what that discussion that you had, Dave, that you talked about, continuing that whole process, I guess, and got to that point.
Yeah, and ba- based on, yeah, based on the draft language we have, we have proposed, it, it.